Everybody. It's 6:30. I'll call the February meeting of the Sartell St. Stephen School Board to order. Thank you to all of the community members that are attending in person as well as online. We appreciate your interest and engagement in our school district. We are going to begin tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Freedom!
Next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Do I hear him, Martin?
Second.
Motion by Trent, second by Jason. Discussion. There are no in favor, say aye. Aye? The opposed say nay. Motion passes unanimously.
Take up a little bit, please.
Sure will, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the recognition of visitors in public forum. Tonight we have 11 speakers for public forum. We granted an extra spot over our limit of 10 because that person was unable to access the signup form and reached out to the board with their request to speak. We'll be discussing how to fine tune our online signup process later in this meeting. Just a quick comment to anyone who does not get a spot during a public forum session. Your opinions are equally important to us. Please contact the board by phone or email to share your thoughts. Our contact information is on the district website and that includes the group email address that gets delivered to all of the board members and superintendent. Our public forum policy says, quote, "In the interest of maintaining a respectful and welcoming public forum, all speakers are expected to demonstrate professionalism and deliver their remarks in a respectful manner. Vulgarity, personal attacks, malice, or specific complaints identifying staff or students by name or implication will not be permitted." I'd ask any speaker who addresses us tonight to stand under the clock over here since we don't have a podium area. And Jason, since he is seated closest to that spot, is gonna have the three minute timer for the speakers. Our first speaker this evening is Kevin.
Thank you and good evening. My name is Kevin McCann and I'm here to call attention to a growing concern within our community. There have been reports of a book within our district that is cause for alarm. I've heard rumors from the community that this book has been influencing the very actions of this board. I'm willing to bet there's even a copy in the superintendent's office. This book is called Robert's Rules of Order and it has been a fundamental guide to orderly civic meetings for 150 years. District policy section 203 governing this board is based on Robert's Rules. If any less experienced board members need a refresher on parliamentary procedure, you can borrow my copy. Or if it's more for Brits, I brought a copy of an abridged version of Robert's Rules for Dummies. For certain board members who seem to clutch so dearly to every letter of every policy, I only ask that you follow those policies governing your own actions and conduct yourselves like professional public servants and not like angry children. Unfortunately, there's another concern that is both serious and disappointing. I've been made aware that recording of the last meeting of this board has been uploaded to a video sharing website called www.pornhub.com. You can all guess which part of the meeting that was. Those involved should be ashamed. I wish to congratulate you on the notoriety that you have brought to us, but I fail to see how this advances the mission of the school district. If anyone thinks that reading aloud such profanity in a public school forum is more appropriate than any other way of addressing something as benign as a library book, then your personal judgment is seriously flawed. It's important to note that no one here has questioned the content of that book, but rather the frankly idiotic way in that the issue was raised. It is crystal clear to all of us that the purpose of such outlandish action is to provoke outrage where none exists and to garner support from those ignorant of real fact. These strategies have been well used by fascist groups before and they have no place in our school district. I sincerely hope that your actions moving forward are well intentioned, but I caution you, in the entirety of world history, nobody who has sought to ban books has ever turned out to be the good guys. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tina.
Alright, good evening. My name is Tina Perry and I have been a proud educator in our district since 1996. I am also an honored graduate of this amazing system, having been a student here from first through 12th grade. I've worked with children my entire life and have a bachelor's degree in elementary education, a master's degree in children's literature, plus an additional 60 credits in social studies. I am the very definition of being born to teach. Each fall I spend the better part of a month establishing relationships with all 25-plus students entrusted to my care for the year. I work incredibly hard to learn who they are as a child and as a student, their likes, dislikes, fears, and strengths. We celebrate daily the unique things they bring to our classroom and this fall was no different. I was sharing with my students that my favorite food in the whole world was my grandma's banana cream pie. It was her specialty made for every family gathering for over 40 years of my life. We moved on and the students shared their favorite foods, we laughed and connected over our food traditions. And then fast forward to the holidays and I got a card given to me by one of my sweet students that read, "I know this is not your grandma's banana cream pie, but it is Coburn's and you are the best teacher ever." This is why I do what I do. I am passionate about educating children, building connections, and teaching them kindness and compassion along with the knowledge they will need to be successful members of our community. We are all in the business of caring for children. Some of us assist particular students, some of us have classrooms, some of us serve breakfast and lunch, some of us clean school buildings or mow the grass, some of us drive bus, some of us serve as administrators or sit on the school board, but all of us work for the children. What kind of message would we be sending these children, our children, if we disagreed by arguing, by lying, by bullying on an organized Facebook page? What kind of education would we be giving if we taught them we don't want to see or hear or read a book about anyone who is different from us in any way? What kind of role models would we be if we showed them that differences are meant to divide, anger, intimidate, create fear, or even be rushed to the national news rather than rationally discussed by a group of grownups? We are in the business of caring for children. Instead of becoming the poster child of what not to do, we need to rise up and become the best of the best once again. We can show our children that we value the experience of our talented teachers and trust them to do the jobs they are so passionate about. Let's show these same children that we are human too. We all make mistakes. We learn from them together and we give ourselves grace in the process. Let them see a school board that promotes uniqueness and joins district staff in celebrating differences because we have so much that we could be learning from one another. Give them the right to choose the books which reflect them, that they can read and discuss with others in an attempt to be more inclusive.
Thank you, Tina.
Yep.
Moving on to Robin, please.
Thank you, school board, and thank you Dr. Beto Hoover for allowing Zoe and I to speak today. I'm a mother of four students in Sartell Schools and Zoe is a fifth grader at Riverview Intermediate. Pat and I moved to Sartell over 14 years ago because of the excellent reputation of Sartell Public Schools. The teachers, staff, administrators, and community involvement allow our schools to excel. However, the recent January 23rd school board meeting raised concerns that some are hoping to undermine school board policies to cause division. I believe that professional educators and parents can partner together to guide children's reading. Other parents should not be making these decisions for my family. I have concerns that these demands to ban or restrict access to books in schools and libraries will not stop at a few books, but will continue to perpetuate further book bans and curriculum reviews. Zoe's love of reading stems from her experience in Sartell School. Thank you to the teachers and librarians who have introduced church to the complex and exciting world of reading. It is a shame that some want to limit access to books like All Are Welcome by Alexandra Pinbold because they believe that they have controversial themes and images. Zoe would like to read to you today. Please consider if this story represents our Sartell St. Stephen Schools or if we want the future of our schools to be a place where only some are welcome. Heads are sharpened in their case, bells are ringing, let's make haste. School's beginnings, dreams are chase, all are welcome here. No matter how you start your day, what you wear, or when you play, or if you come from far away, all are welcome here. In your classroom, safe and sound, fear's your loss, focus down, raise your hand, we'll go around, all are welcome here. Gather now, let's all take part, we'll play music, we'll make art. We'll share stories from the heart, all are welcome here. Time for lunch, water spread, dozen different kinds of meat, pass it round till everyone's fed, all are welcome here. Open doors, rush outside, we will swing, we will slide, we'll have fun side by side, all are welcome here. We're part of a community, ours drink is our diversity, a shelter for adversity, all are welcome here. We will learn from each other, special qualities to uncover, who's a thing we'll soon discover. All are welcome here. So much to learn, so much to do, and when the busy day is through, hailing to come back, starting new, all are welcome here. Head for home, get some rest, and greet the mom, ready and fresh. Our time together is the best, all are welcome here. You have a place here. You have a space here. You are welcome here.
Thank you, board. My name is Leigh, I'm a district 748 graduate, resident, and a parent of three neighbors, grades three, nine, and 11. We have been wonderfully started through preschool all the way through to high school here at Sartell. I'm an engaged supporter of public education, teachers, and staff. Tonight's school board agenda lists the Violence Prevention Policy 525 that's up for review. 525 lists that it's not only applicable to students but in support of teachers and staff. The purpose statement on this policy states the school board is committed to promoting healthy human relationships and learning environments that are physically and psychologically safe for members of the school community and further believes that the community is a priority and they should be protected from physical and emotional harm. The Violence Prevention Policy mentions psychological safety and I'm a firm believer that you cannot lead or be a leader anywhere without having positive trusting relationships. And I'd like to ask that you as a school board consider your role in creating a psychological safe environment for members of this learning community. Some of the questions I might ask for you to reflect on and for us as a community to reflect on as well. If you were to make a mistake in this district, will it be held against you? Are members on this team able to bring up tough issues? Do people on this team sometimes reject others for being different? Would anybody on this team deliberately act in a way that undermines the efforts of others? Are school community members and their unique skills and talents valued and utilized? So tonight I ask that you consider how your actions impact relationships in this district. Relationships are gonna make or break the reputation of Sartell. This public school and the kids in it are being negatively impacted by the negativity and controversy going on in the community. Again, I care deeply about supporting Sartell Public Education and if this is why you serve on the board, I believe that you need to find a way to create psychological safety for our teachers and our kids. Thank you.
Start with Bennett.
School board, Dr. Beto Hoover, community members, good evening. There's new faces on this board, so I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Bennett. I'm a high schooler in the district and I'm no stranger to speaking out there. To those who have heard me speak before, you understand that I regularly do my best to thank the board and highlight the positives in our community. But we've reached a point where we cannot always focus on the positives. That being said, I love our teachers. Sartell has some of the best teachers in the state. They're the reason we have one of the best districts in the state. And when they're being slandered and verbally assaulted, teachers leave, as they should. We don't want to be subject to that behavior. When they leave our school, our district loses the reason it's so exceptional. That's why I'm here tonight. I attended the February work session. I sat in the second row and in front of me sat a row of educators, many of whom I have had as my teachers. And I can tell you that they are some of the best teachers in our district. The meeting came and it went. On February 3rd, this photo was posted on Extremist Facebook page. And these four educators sitting in the front row of the audience. I had two concerns about this photo. Number one, the comment section, which called for these teachers' names, addresses, called for them to be fired, called them pedophiles, and threatened to harm them physically. I was disgusted. I am disgusted. This is not behavior as a district we can don't nor tolerate. Our teachers are excellent, but we cannot afford to lose them. This behavior is unacceptable. Number two is the photo itself. This photo was taken from directly in front of these teachers. Now, I was at the meeting and I never saw anyone walk in front of these teachers and take the photo. Now that leaves one other solution. That solution would be that a board member possibly could have taken this photo and more concerningly provided it to an organization known to target educators. This would of course obviously be in direct violation of policy 209, which, and more egregiously subsegment B11, which says provide support for superintendent employees of the district so they may perform their proper functions on a professional level. Taking this photo and allowing it to be used to target educators would do the exact opposite. Now, a board member could have possibly taken this photo, or they could have been checking the time, or maybe they could have been enabling an extremist group to use this photo and by proxy allowing their staff to be put in harm's way. If this was the case, due to this major breach of ethics and policy, I would hope and strongly encourage that the board would immediately remove this board member by majority vote from the Sartell St. Stephen.
Public meeting.
Gina, please.
Good evening. My name is Gina Pross. I'm a teacher at Riverview Intermediate School. I have over 20 years of teaching experience and a master's degree in curriculum and instruction. I served the district on several leadership capacities. I am a member of our English Language Arts Curriculum Revaluation Team. I am a lead mentor at Riverview, providing support to new teachers in the beginning of their career. I am a member of our Building Instructional Leadership Team and while I am a very active voice on hold, I still consider myself a real and actual parent of two students in this group, a third grader or a seventh grader and a tenth grader. But my highest and most responsible title is best third grade teacher ever. I am the best third grade teacher ever. I have certificates and awards that line our classroom walls. I have mugs and ornaments and I even have an award that I hold on my badge every day. Now while this honor is most often bestowed on me by eight, nine-year-olds, I think it's important to note that parents agree. Parents in the room right now, parents in the front row, parents in the back row, and even parents on the board. However, I'm not an anomaly and I'm not an exception. Our district is saturated with experts of education, teachers with countless years of experience, higher level degrees of education, and a vast knowledge. Thankfully, our administration continues to hire and strives to retain the best teachers because while I may be the best third grade teacher ever, it's very apparent I am not equipped to teach seventh grade math, nor do I have the skill set or expertise to teach high school English. As an educator, I am honored to work alongside some of the most dedicated, caring, intelligent, and thoughtful professionals. And as a parent, I am grateful knowing that my children are being taught by experts, taught to be curious, critical thinkers, who are able to effectively communicate and oftentimes articulate better than some of those. A supportive and caring community committed to a thriving educational system is what brought so many of us here. Yet a small group within our community focused on micromanagement, distrust, and disrespect for those in education is making our district one of the most talented educators want to leave and families consider moving. Our tradition of success is built on trusting the experts to do their jobs and this board is charged with oversight of that success. It's not creating or fostering a culture to destroy.
Eric is up next.
Thank you everyone for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Eric and I am the parent of a Riverview Intermediate School son and my wife was a teacher of ESL for 20 years and now works for Education Minnesota. And we are both proud union members and are proud of the district our son attends. However, we do have some concerns. First, that there are board members that are closely affiliated with the KOP group that clearly has an agenda to disrupt public education in our district. Also, the removal of LGBTQ+ materials, some as simple as a rainbow sticker from classrooms. This would go against board and district policy which claims to ensure a welcoming environment for all our students. And their bigotry towards LGBTQ+ students is an extreme view and their endorsement of this bigotry can have a serious impact on students searching for their own identities. Also, as was alluded to earlier, harassing teachers using juvenile tactics and intimidation. The fact that a board member posted a photo of teachers which was taken during an official board function allegedly, while literally sitting in their official capacity is unacceptable. But we're here for the books. This group is being hyperbolic when they label these books as pornography. Labeling these books as pornography is simplistic black and white thinking. There are many things in life that aren't easy for some people to address and/or accept, but they are reality. I wonder if they'd have the same issue with graphic violence, murder, and torture? However, maybe there is some consistency with their actions. They certainly seem opposed to discussing the history of slavery, institutional racism, and police brutality towards non-white people in this country as evidenced by their opposition to dear Martin. When I was growing up in the 80s and 90s, we were dealing with similar zealotry in the form of the Satanic Panic. As kids, we openly mocked and pushed back against this nonsense due to the absurdity of it all. We realized that it was a relatively small group of scared irrational adults acting like children and, you know, we grew up just fine despite their concerns. That was relatively easy to deal with growing up because their histrionics were directed towards an imagined persona that didn't represent who I really was. What is really terrible for the kids in this district is that we have a group of adults who are attacking students for who they are as people. There are vilifying aspects that people do not have a choice over. It is who they are, be they LGBTQ+, BIPOC, or the wrong religion or no religion. I want my son and all students in this district to have the opportunity to realize their own identity and also learn from others in an environment that encourages all people to be true to themselves. I want the students in this district to be prepared for the larger world, not to be afraid of it. This should be done by relying on experts in the district and this includes all staff. Being a taxpayer doesn't make one an expert on education. I definitely think that those that believe in and/or perpetuate myths such as litter boxes in bathrooms should be disqualified from the decision-making for obvious reasons.
I think it's up next, please.
Good evening. I'm Matthew Orenson, a resident of Sartell. Thank you, board, for doing your best to put our kids first. While I may not always agree with the board's decisions, I have respect for your office and I truly believe that you're doing what you think is best for our kids. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight to voice my concerns. I want to speak first about my concerns over the literature that was brought to the community's attentions during their January board meeting. If it's good enough for Pornhub, it's not good enough for our schools. There are no circumstances that this explicit sexual content should be made readily available to our students by our school system using taxpayer dollars. It has been proven multiple times through scientific studies that porn has numerous negative consequences. It is addictive and has the tendencies that could lead to physical, mental, and emotional harm in oneself and potentially others. Don't let a few members of our administration, staff, or community for that matter, make you believe otherwise. Don't allow them to coerce you into allowing this material to be on our school's bookshelves under the guise of book banning. Yes, our schools need a great variety of literature to cater to and challenge the minds of our young kids, but these books have crossed the line. I would hate to see any of our children bear the burden of the negative consequences of porn because our elective officials and our administration and our teachers did not keep high moral principles. Lastly, I want to express my concerns with the mistrust stemming from the administration. There are multiple comments made by the superintendent regarding this issue. He had a full week prior to the January meeting and another week and a half prior to the work session to gather information and state the facts. It was one copy, then two. It was an isolated book, now there are multiple. It arrived at the school in a bulk order, now seemingly it was hand-selected. Why such disparity? I think it's time to try honesty. Honesty will build trust and I promise that trust will make your job easier, less stressful, more enjoyable, and more rewarding. I support our teachers, I support our administration, and I support the school board when they're doing the right thing and when they're not, I won't. The content and sexualization of our children provided by some teachers is wrong. The deceitfulness from their administration is wrong. I hope you as the board recognize this and have the courage to stand up to it, demand answers, and lead our district with integrity. Thank you.
Becky, please.
Good evening, board. Thank you for allowing me to address you. My name is Becky and my husband and I are Sartell residents who sadly do not feel our public school has the best interests of our children at heart. After sitting through many school board meetings in the past two years, it has become very evident that following the rules in place set by yourselves has become optional. Handbook protocol has been ignored. Procedures and policies have been ignored. I have witnessed with my own eyes and ears policies and spoken intentions being doubled back on to save face. News articles with untruths. Who are we expected to trust? One book, no two books. Full purchase order proven to be inaccurate information. Early open forums that were open for public speaking that needed to be closed again. Book lists being shared that are not books that are being questioned. Books that contain pornography do not belong in our schools. In any other forum, this is punishable by law. There are plenty of other well-rounded books that can teach without explicit detail of sexual acts. This is wrong to provide this type of reading material to our children. I just can't wrap my mind around how this is not more evident to this administration. Disappointment and sadness are the two most relevant words that come to mind. To live in a district where we do not feel safe and morally acceptable to send our children to the school that we pay taxes to support. We have made the choice to remove our children almost two years ago and it has been one of the best decisions that we have ever made. Since removing them, it has been proven time and time again with equity audits, lies, deceit, handpicked groups, pornographic reading material, unfollowed processes and procedures, and on and on that it was the right decision. We're optimistic that issues can be resolved and this public school can once again be an educational asset to our community. The lies, deceit and closed-door policies need to end. Thank you.
Next up is Paisley.
Hi, my name is Paisley and I would like to start off by saying thank you to the members of the school board and superintendent Dr. Rattlehoover for all that you do for Sartell schools and the community. I am here as a student to voice my view, experience and opinion on the Sartell school system. I have attended Sartell schools since kindergarten. Overall, I have enjoyed my eleven years here. I've had superior teachers every step of the way that support me, through wanting to get to know me and made me feel like I belong. They went and continue to go above and beyond their technical call of duty. Until recently, these teachers have been shown respect, appreciation and kindness that they have earned and deserved. These exemplary people taught me the things that I continue to carry with me today. From my first grade teacher, Miss Stenberg, teaching me that the difference between dessert and desert by saying that dessert has one more S because who doesn't want more dessert? And student seventh grader, Mrs. Keller, teaching me to always have my papers double spaced and text in Roman, full point font. To Mrs. Nelson in tenth grade, teaching me that the boys are the minority out of the vast majority of people who care about me and appreciate me for who I am. And this year, Mrs. Benson and Miss Van Lannan taught me that I should be proud of what I do and did not dumb myself down for others. My experience at Sartell is not a unique one by far. Not only do we excel at academics and athletics, but also in having exceptional teachers and staff across every grade, building and subject. It is because of teachers like these, of that there are many, that I have always imagined myself graduating from Sartell High School and shaking the hands of the people that have known me, taught me and shaped me into the person that I am in the moment I received to my diploma. That dream and those teachers are the reason why when my parents offered me to switch schools in fourth, fifth and sixth grade because of bullying and again in ninth grade, I said no. Our schools and community are lucky to have them, but I'm sure that all of you as a school board are already well aware of that due to their magnified view and perspective as it is a hard thing to miss. You can see it in the current students, grades K through twelve and in the alumni, both new and old. You can see it in the classrooms, the activities, the hallways, the community. Everywhere you look, you can find the mark that Sartell teachers have made. In order to continue to thrive, we have and we need to pay attention and show unwear bearing support and appreciation to our teachers. We need to respect them, forgive them and work with them, be being both the school board and the community. Because right now it is evident that these actions are not the reality. We need to come together to be a part of the solution. So to both members of the school board and the community, I implore you to work together, find a way to support and build up our teachers instead of breaking them down. Because without our teachers, Sartell would not be what it is today.
My last speaker tonight is Peter.
Good evening. My name is Peter Wilson. I moved up to Minnesota in eighty-nine. I am greatly disappointed in much that has gone on here. My mother, when we were kids, my brothers and sisters, her whole goal was to be a teacher. So when my brothers and I and sisters were old enough, she started college, got her degree, masters and other masters and she became an educator. She donated her entire compensation back to the parochial school that she taught at. She believed in education and I think there are some in here that have the same feeling. The problem is right now what you've got is a great deal of, instead of education indoctrination. And again, I'm going to start with age appropriate and topic appropriate. Those books that were described are neither age appropriate nor topic appropriate for being in a school. They don't belong. There's other places they can be seen. That's not where they should be. You don't take a first grade student and teach them trigonometry or geometry. They learn the basics. Now, let's get into what is going to be the next step, which is what is not present in the libraries. What books are in there or what periodicals talk about global warming and climate change or other things being fraudulent? Let's hope there's an equal amount stating they're negative or that it doesn't exist. How about the books like Joe Henman's, The Metrocrats, talking about the unwritten and unelected government that's unconstitutional that runs much of our country? How about various things on Agenda Twenty-One, sustainability goals? Those are all out there and can be found. Can they be found easily in the schools? Being a member of the real counterculture, not those of you who think you are, I think these are appropriate. Let the children read them if they can. A few of them are salvageable. Some may not be. Again, we also need to look at the teachers unions. I have no issue with teachers or unions. I have issues with the censorship promoted by teachers unions, including just as a quick one because I'm aware of it initially in the last couple of days, NewsGuard where they fund the intentional censorship of activity. Again, I think that we need to work on what needs to be in there in addition to what should be going. We need to, that's called foreshadowing. Thank you.
Thank you to all of our speakers tonight. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Do I hear motions? All right. Second by Emily. Any discussion, questions?
Thank you to all the donations for sure. I mean, kind of a lot of money that we're receiving for the different things in our district and our community and things we have to support.
There's no other discussion, we'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, consent agenda passes unanimously. The report section, the first, I believe there is a Saber Star report.
Yeah, I wanted to share that we do have a Saber Star this month. It has Rhonda Ferschel. She's not able to make it tonight, so we're hopeful she can make it to the March. We need to be recognized. But I wanted to share her name because she's a wonderful and talented individual that works in our district service.
Thank you. Then on to Dr. Rattlehoover's superintendent report.
All right. Well, to begin, I would like to thank Mayor Marvin and Saint Stephen providing the board meeting venue tonight. It's been some time since a school board meeting has been held here and we're thankful for the hospitality that's been shown. It's been a busy month since our last board meeting and there's a lot to share with respect to student and staff achievements as well as district level work. We had a wonderful evening earlier this month at the Oak Ridge Early Learning Center. Was hosted our early childhood family night, wonderful night for families to come together at that, at that school. In the area of student activities and athletics, our Saber speech team recently took first place at the St. Michael Invitational. Our Knowledge Bowl team hosted an invitational as well and came with both a second and fourth place award. They also competed at an away meet and placed fourth in the varsity division and first in the JV. And then they followed that up this last weekend. They placed in first, fourth and sixth in the varsity division at Zimmerman. Congratulations to the Knowledge Bowl team. Our Saber math team took first place in their division and four of our participants placed individually in the top ten. Very impressive. Our Riverview Intermediate student was recently elected to serve on the Junior Council for a National Children's Magazine. Quite an accomplishment there. Two Sartell Middle School students recently competed in the regional spelling bee at Resource Training and Solutions. And we had one student recently earn all state in orchestra. Also proud to share that six of our high school students recently participated in the all-state choir concert at Orchestra Hall. And the high school one act played placed second at the eight double A section competition. Girls Nordic ski team qualified for state as did one of our individual boy participants. And last weekend, we had three gymnasts qualify individually for the state meet at Roy Wilkins Auditorium. Dance team, they also qualified for state and they did so in both jazz and kick categories and we had two individual dancers named to the alternate team. Boys hockey team recently won their second consecutive Central Lakes Conference championship. And in swimming and diving, five of our state qualifiers from our boys team were awarded that distinction last weekend. So those are the activities we've kind of seen forward this, this winter. We also have our spring activities meeting upcoming. That's going to take place on March seventh at the high school. Wanted also share that our ninth graders recently participated in the Youth Frontiers Respect Committee on February ninth and tenth. Student, staff and parent feedback from that was outstanding. I was able to get over there and spend some time with the kids and it was absolutely incredible. We're thankful to share that our Certified Nursing Assistant Program recently was awarded a grant of $5,000 for next generation nursing to assist with equipment as well provide students with real-world hands-on training. A little water here. As a reminder, we used last Monday, excuse me, February twentieth as our second inclement weather makeup day. Timing was probably good because then we had some poor weather right after that and we battled some on historically unprecedented winter weather there. We gauged in our first two days of e-learning and I'm proud of the students and staff for their hard work and dedication to ensuring the learning continued during this most recent stretch of inclement weather. I also want to thank this board once again for approving that e-learning plan. Otherwise, we would have been adding days to school in June, which I'm sure the kids would prefer not to do. At our most recent Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Advisory Committee meeting, Director of Learning and Teaching Dr. Megan Brunkhold along with a team of teacher leaders recently presented plans to tailor our literacy curriculum around the science of reading. This will assist us as we investigate and eventually adopt a new English language arts curriculum. Special thanks to Chair Morley, Clerk Larson for their attendance and interest in this exciting new endeavor. Also, I mentioned Treasurer Smith came in and visited with Dr. Brunkhold as well and had a good understanding of what we're looking to do in the area of literacy. The district technology director and myself recently met with some experts in the area of esports. With the rise in popularity and the connections to industry, we are looking to see if there might be a place for esports in our community education programming and perhaps on the road as an academic offering. Student interest in this area is very high and esports continue to be one of the fastest and most innovative areas in the entertainment industry. And connected to the last topic and mentioned in our January meeting, we're looking to fill our vacant community education position. We're going to be doing so by pairing that position with the position of Middle School Activities Director. Our position is now posted and we anticipate a candidate to be selected in the beginning of this July one. As you probably know, the legislature is continuing their work with this being a school funding year. We continue to watch the happenings with anticipation. There are several proposals under a variety of categories in particular just to us would be the per-cripule formula, special education cross-subsidy, safe and secure school funding, which includes mental health allocations and statewide equalization. And I want to finish this part of the report with, you know, we all know our teachers are incredible, but it's with extreme pride that I share that nine of the hundred and thirty-one statewide NAMM and NICE for Minnesota Teacher of the Year are teachers from this district. That is the highest representation in the state. And I know we've had a lot of conversation here tonight and in the last month around books. And I just want to spend some time because I know not everybody was able to attend the earlier work session we had in February. And I just want to take a few minutes to provide an account and update with respect to library resource materials. I was just sharing this so everyone is understanding that throughout the last, what I understand about three decades, there's been two different methods of procurement of library resource materials. One of which has been going through, what would typically be looked at as your, your media center specialist or library, in our case, it's our ITSs. There is a vetting process through that, that plan that has generally been quite extensive and quite good. Those generally lend themselves well to end up on our library shelves in our traditional library spaces. Our teachers have also been buying books for their classrooms for a great number of years without any issues. This last summer, we did have some books purchased and it was in a large bulk order. A lot of titles were selected from that and clearly there was some, some concerns over at least a few of those titles. I want to be clear that our district does not intend to restrict or otherwise ban books, but we do have an obligation and a responsibility to ensure that materials are age appropriate. To that end, our district has adopted a procurement and vetting process for books that will be made available to students. So they'll be all followed in the same process which we shared with the board here at the work session and we found agreement. So I want to just kind of revisit the last situation we had in the last meeting and so forth. So in accordance with district policy and guidelines and procedures, a request for reevaluation of a material was made on January thirteenth. On that date, the book was removed for review. This occurred again several days prior to the January twenty-third meeting. Director Wenchard did send me an email. I sent him a, a link back that mentioned that it would start at the building level and I, I mentioned the Director Wenchard, I should have said it was removed and we had a good conversation again earlier this week about that. The book had not been checked out by any student before it was moved from circulation. There was two copies of that book at the meeting on the twenty-third. I was not aware of that. Did find out afterwards that there was. That particular book was never in circulation and both books that were purchased together were not made available to students and are currently in the possession of building administration. That book was part of that order of approximately ninety books, many of which were either bestselling titles or books by award-winning authors or both. Under that same review, other items in the collection were identified, placed in review and one other book was subsequently removed. That is also in the possession of building administration and not available to students. There's been other titles that have been brought to the attention. And right now those books are all being reviewed. Some may very well end up back on the shelf and some may not. But we're going to follow a thorough, appropriate site-based vetting process to make that determination. And so some have also inquired about the specifics related to the procurement of individual library materials and resources and subsequent actions that potentially could be taken. Please note that we are prohibited by law from discussing or sharing any private personnel data. Now that I shared the past protocols and what we're going to be doing to move forward, I want to thank everybody in this room for your passion because that's the passion that makes this district so special. Going to go off script a little bit, just ask you to please do something for me, those in attendance, just take a look around, please. And what you're going to see are your neighbors, people you socialize with, parents and guardians whose children, your children play with in the neighborhoods and activities. And some of you share some of the same feelings around many topics. Many of you have vastly different opinions. This is certainly true of library books. And it's not only okay to disagree, it's normal and quite healthy. In the end, I'm here just to tell you that as we learn more, we do better. In the case of the library media materials, we found an area for which improvement was necessary and we have addressed it in a comprehensive and with a reasonable solution. Going forward, all media resource materials will be comprehensively vetted and for age-appropriate standards will be implemented to ensure we are honoring the commitment to both our students and our families. We'll also need to look at our current collection to see if other items should warrant for the review and we will follow that same process outline on our website that was shared at the February work session. Please note that requests for review begin at the building level. And so simply calling the, the school administration could help alleviate many of those concerns. In closing, challenging times make us stronger. And as a district, we're going to need to partner with our families to ensure that we're providing a world-class education each and every student that we serve.
Any questions? Otherwise we can move on.
I've got two different things. E-learning, now that day one and two are under the belt, was there feedback that came in from staff or students, any issue or things that need to be attended to?
Good question. We did not have any feedback other than saying thank you and asking me to express the answer to the board as well for doing the e-learning most of the year.
Can I take you back on that? And maybe this, Matt, let me know if this isn't appropriate, but you had said that there is a calendar meeting coming up, correct? Do we need to amend the agenda at all to add a work or not a work session, but a listening session for any feedback that we had talked about before? And I know you and I had had a conversation about the calendar, being that the calendar is coming up. And I know you and I had had a conversation about um, the calendar, being that the calendar is coming up. I'm sorry, I don't have a voice. I hope that you all can hear me, but I apologize in advance. Is it possible that we could have maybe a day in the first semester and a day in the second semester? That would not need to be made up. They could just be those snow days.
It, it's quite possible. In fact, I'd like your suggestion you mentioned to me last week. And when the calendar committee meets later this week, that'll be something on the agenda.
Okay.
That, that calendar for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year was provisionally approved last year. Um, I think there's going to be some tweaks that we're going to want to make to it. All of that information will come back to this board most likely in March. I don't believe that calendar should have any effect on our ability to continue with e-learning. But I know we want to do some um, community feedback, family feedback, um, prior to making a um, permanent thing. So it shouldn't have any effect on that. It would just allow us to have those dates.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I would think we'd be able to do or get our feedback on the e-learning system a little bit later than the calendar.
Sure.
Yeah, the only difference that is, is that we would say we're going to make them up during the e-learning or adding the dates to the end.
Okay.
Um, and then the only other question was on the process with the books, just clarifying. There, the criteria is really the same essentially as far as choice for instructional materials or mini-materials. That all is essentially remain the same, the criteria for choosing, the biggest thing is just the, the. Like step in between requesting and then the actual purpose that is just more oversight there.
Yeah, we will not have an open P O. Um, things will be going through the, the channels of the ITSs in the, in the buildings, um, with our teachers.
Okay.
So teachers are still going to have plenty of say in, in the literature that's provided in our schools. We want to have an extra step. It just, when you're buying a lot of books, it's very hard to make sure that all of them are, are read embedded.
Right.
So we're going to do a much better job of, of that, having more eyes and, and, um, and voices involved in, in the conversation.
Well, that was kind of, yeah, I guess that was my question is the process, the, the prior process will probably remain the same where like the Google spreadsheet, you're going to put your, but. There will just be, I'm guessing, instead of having the order, because I think those orders would be done like twice a year. Instead of looking over like a hundred books at a time with this being smaller.
Yeah, they're pretty mass orders and I think that's not a convenience, but I think probably you're right, a smaller, smaller bad order might be better.
Okay.
And, and I, I do know and, and you know, just so the community knows, I've had conversations with. Pretty much all of these board members since our last work session last meeting. We are very much moving forward on the same page with respect to the process. Um, and things of that nature. And I think we're, we're, we're going to be in a good spot. I know tonight and the last month have been very difficult. Um, for a lot in our community. But there's a lot of good things happening as you can attest, um, and can hear from things that have been shared tonight, things that I shared via, via the report. And we are working through this and we will get through this. And I'm thankful to the community, to the board, we're, we're working through a challenging topic and sometimes those things happen and, and we're going to come on other side stronger.
Right. So just to clarify, um. We're essentially having to re-vet some of the books because the process. Wasn't followed in as far as vetting goes, correct? As far as you know?
They're really, for far as I know, there really wasn't a vetting process. They looked for popular titles. Um, award-winning authors, things of that nature, things that would interest our kids. Um, and it was, it was a large order and our teachers are amazing and we've all agreed. I, I pray every one of us say that. Um, and, and in that case, there's some things that we just needed to look a little bit more closely at. And so there'll be a one comprehensive vetting process going on.
Okay. Thank you for all your work on that as well.
Thank you.
I know it hasn't been easy for you or our staff, so I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks for taking the time to explain this to me. Um, unless there's any other questions, we'll move on to our district finance report. Um, no problem, please.
Uh, just a couple of things on this item tonight. Um, the, the typical monthly uh, budget to actual report is attached. On the agenda for uh, activity for January, uh, we're tracking well, um, right now throughout the year, uh, very similar to last year for the most part. We, um, this is based on the original budget and we will have um, a budget revision presented for hopefully approval at the April board meeting. To uh, revise the current year's budget, um, and then likely in June, um, for the original budget for next year. And I think there's a topic, um, a discussion for potential budget work section for the board, which I'll take personally too. To present if they talk to, talk about the original by different next year in greater detail. Uh, not going to spend a whole lot of time on that one. Tonight, I am going to go over a presentation, um, last, was it last Friday? The day before?
Yeah, one of these, yeah, they all kind of mix together.
Yeah, about a week and a half ago, I sat down with Jen Smith, who is the board treasurer now, um, and Dr. Rital Hoover. We went through um, a presentation I had originally put together back in February of two thousand nineteen. To kind of talk to the community about some basics of school finance in Minnesota and as they relate to Sartell St. Stephen. Um, we've had five new board members since then, and I know, um, not just the people who were elected this time around, but Tricia and, and Matt have, weren't, weren't serving on the board yet. Um, so kind of thought it was a good time for a refresh on some of this. The context of it is at the time, we had gone out for a um, potential operating levy in October, or November of two thousand eighteen. Um, it failed. Um, and then Jeff Schlieber, superintendent at the time, and the sitting board members, uh, did some listening sessions. At um, a number of schools and other places throughout the, the communities. And took, took some feedback on just some questions the public had about school finance, why we were asking for an operating levy at the time. How that differed from the money that we had got for the, the bonds to build a high school and remodel the other schools. So I want to refresh that with some more current data and just kind of go over a big picture. And also let everybody know about some resources that are available on our website under business services. Um, so school finance in Minnesota breaks down into a couple of things. Um, funding is really for the most part controlled at the state level. We're in a, we're in a funding year right now. The legislature is talking about what state funding is going to look like. We also have federal sources and local sources like property taxes and um, things like fees that we charge for uh, technology-related items. Gate entry fee, activity fees, things like that. Um, our expenditures are based on local choice. Um, you'll, I'll, I'll go through um, kind of a big picture, how we spend money, um. A little bit later, but um, really things like policy around class size, uh, greatly impact. Um, what, how we decide to spend money and also what our mandates are. So we're required to provide a free appropriate education to all students regardless of need and background. I like to remind people that in the United States and in Minnesota, we have laws that um, are almost unique in the world. Because really no matter what your need is, or what your background is. Um, in, in the United States, it's the school's responsibility to educate every student, um, between the ages of seven and eighteen, basically. Um, go ahead. All right. So a few things, just as far as our, of accounting system goes, um, most of our money is spent in the general fund. This is where our operating levies are used. This is where all our teachers are paid from. This is where our transportation is paid from, um, our building maintenance, all those, uh, administration, all those types of things. And that was where our operating levies were targeting. Um, our building construction fund is where we account for things like bonds that were passed. Back in spring of two thousand sixteen, built a high school and do all kinds of other subsequent work. Uh, food service fund and community services fund are intended to be self-sustaining and not rely on the general fund. Not rely on things that can be used for, for our um, main education programs. And then the debt service fund is really there, uh, that has to be separate by statute and that's where we pay off the bond that we issued. Um, most of that is funded through um, through the um, tax levy, local tax levy, and there's some portion of state aid that comes through debt service too. Little bit of big picture Minnesota data, like to throw in there. About eight hundred and ninety-three, eight hundred and ninety-four thousand total public schools in Minnesota. This is a couple of years old. This is the most updated day we had. Um, and then non-public and homeschool are about another eighty-six thousand. Of all those nine hundred thousand, about thirty-two percent are eligible for free and reduced meals. That was at the time and we were at twelve percent. About two years ago, we're pushing a little over double that now, just because of the way they're looking at free and reduced meals this year. Any student that is on Medicaid is automatically qualifying for that, which is new. Um, so there'll be a kind of a one-year spike in those stats unless the legislature decides to continue that practice. There's three hundred and eight, oh, sorry, three hundred and twenty-eight public school districts, the biggest ones in Okeahampton with almost forty thousand students. Smallest one is Milroy with thirty-nine students and we are number forty-eight population-wise, which are the worst of all student elements. Um, statewide state funds and uh, that are basically decided at the legislative level. Uh, make up about seventy-one percent of district funding. Local funds mostly in the form of tax levies make up about twenty percent and then federal programs are about nine. We rely a little more on the state, quite a bit more, um, compared to other districts, eighty-three, fourteen and three. And um, that free and reduced lunch count that you saw was about a third of the state average at the time, that drives a lot of that. Um, a lot of the federal discrepancy, um, because a lot of the federal grants are based on that free and reduced lunch count. And then our local levy, our local operating levy being quite a bit lower than the state average. Um, even though we did have ours approved in November of two thousand nineteen. Um, accounts for a big difference, um, in the different local monies. Uh, this is just showing that kind of in another format. The operating levy itself is about three percent of our general fund revenue. Other tax levies make up about seven point six percent in the general fund. So this part is voter-approved, this part is not. It's basically set by legislature, um, by formula. And then we approve that um, in December every year for the following year. That's these data sources, I'm going to take the part again, no problem. Go ahead. Uh, operating levy per student, right now we've got four hundred and sixty dollars per student. That is turned around then and levied on local property taxpayers for operating funds. The Minnesota district average right now is up to nine hundred and fifty-three dollars per student. Um, this is what I like to show people, um, from time to time. This is probably hard to read in this room, but this is on our website. Um, but it's kind of an example tax statement and you know. Your property tax valuation is kind of up in the operating corner. I always tell people to look there first because last year we've had. Historic increases in property tax values in this area and, and really in Rossa State. Um, having to do with the real estate market and um, of the assessments, uh, the county assessment. Um, teams have, we're along with, we're following that real estate trend. Um, our, our average growth per market value had grown by about six to seven percent consistently for about the six years before that. And then this last year went up by nineteen point five-five, I believe. Um, so we have no control over that, but it does impact your taxes. And you can see that um, on your tax statement, if you take time to look at it, there is the elements that are the jurisdiction that you live in. In this example, there's the Stearns County and Sartell City. And then the district levies broken up into those voter-approved and local levies. And that voter-approved includes both our four hundred and sixty dollars per student and our building bonds. One other thing I like to point out, sometimes people go, wait, I thought that was four sixty. And even if this didn't include our building bond, this would never be four sixty for somebody unless it happened to correlate that way with your. Um, with your market value. The four sixty is just a calculation of the total revenue we get is four sixty times every student and they divide that up among all property taxpayers. Uh, building bonds and operating levies, I kind of talked about this a little bit already, um. But uh, building bonds can be voted on at different times throughout the year. And can only be used for the construction or betterment of school facilities and grounds. Sometimes the questions are really pointed at specific projects. Um, really depends what the, what the question says on the ballot at the time. Um, all property, including ag land is taxed at its proportion of the net tax capacity. And the operating levies, we can only run those on a general election date. Um, it doesn't have to be an even year. It can be on an odd year where there wouldn't be a general election, but it has to be that election date of the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November or whatever that is. Um, can be used for any operating expense of the district, whereas building blocks cannot be. And ag land is intact besides the first acre. So for operating levies, it's only the house, the value of the house, the garage and the first acre. Uh, that are taken into consideration for operating levies. The biggest part of our basic uh, state funding that you'll hear about is the gen ed basic formula. And this is what you hear talked about if you're paying attention to what the legislature is doing. Funding years like now, you'll hear that all the states is going to say five and five, they'll say four and four, this or whatever it is. We've, um, that means what percent increase is going on this formula this year and next year. So you can see that the average increase has been mostly two years. There was a two and a half in two thousand twenty-two. Uh, for the past several years. So when they say like, uh, states projecting a four and two or whatever, uh, whatever they say. That would mean a four percent increase for fiscal year twenty-four and a two percent for fiscal year twenty-five. We won't know that until uh, the legislative session is done, uh, in hopefully early May this year. Um, they'll have, uh, Jeff mentioned the legislative process a little bit. All the bills are due to their respective, um. My words are failing me right now, but all the committee bills are due to the respective, um, policies, uh, at, on April fourth this year. Budget target timeline. So we should have a pretty good idea at that point. Um, flip back one, sorry, Maria, I skipped a part of this. So um, adjusted pupil units are all these kids sitting in front of me. They're all APUs to me. So a student in grades K through two is, represents one APU. If they're enrolled in our district from the first day of school through the last. If they're in grade seven through twelve, they represent one point two. So that's how much funding they generate. It's for this year's sixty-eight, sixty-three times one point two. That's the basic formula. Um, go ahead. With that in mind, here's our adjusted pupil units for the last several years. You can see they've remained fairly even. Um, kind of went up steadily for twenty twenty-one and then um, a little bit down in the last couple of years, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three. There's an asterisk there because that's still um, an estimate for this year. We know how many kids we have. We don't really know till all the, um, till, as the school year is done, how many member days every student's going to be. But we're projecting um, right around forty-four, sixty for the year. Special ed funding is a big one that's talked about this time of year too. You will hear a lot of districts talk about their cross subsidy. Um, so there, there are basically three elements to special ed funding. One is federal aid and that um, basically is allocated to districts across the board. Um, through the respective state's department of education. Uh, but the state gets a certain amount of federal aid and then they disperse that to us. We get a relatively low amount because of our low free and reduced pass. Um, uh, population. State aid is based on a, a reimbursement of eligible expenditures and how much state aid is allocated statewide by legislature. So we get about fifty-five percent of our eligible expenses reimbursed in state aid. Um, you can see the fifty-five and the eight, that's about sixty-three percent so far. Um, our medical assistance billing is also available for students that qualify, that are on MA. Uh, are on medical assistance and need certain services from our staff that qualify as uh, medical. Needs that are billable to the insurance companies. We're required to do that. We do that through our specialized co-op that in Stearns End District. Um, I don't have the percentage for that. It varies quite a bit from year to year, um, anywhere from about a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of revenue. Um, for that. So all of those considered, we have um, in twenty-one, twenty-two, we had about. Um, eight million dollars of total special ed expenditures. We had about five point eight in all those aids. And um, resulting in a cross subsidy of about three point two million dollars per year. So here that talked about at the legislature, legislative level, um, addressing that cross subsidy that's basically saying. We're required to provide these students, uh, services for some of our students, but they're not a hundred percent reimbursed. That's the difference. There is a YouTube video here. You don't have to click on that. Um, it's a, it's a nice little two-minute thing that, um, somebody from one of the state associations put together that gives a little, nice little snapshot on how special it can be. Other gen ed fund, there is some things that are based on other circumstances, population and other factors. You hear compensatory, English language learners, operating capital, those types of things. We do receive federal funds for Title One and Two, um, largely based on a free and reduced lunch percentage. Long-term facilities maintenance is a combination of levy and aid that we've been used to um, keep up our buildings. And operating capital is used for technology, textbooks, equipment, things like that. Um, by program, uh, kind of how we break things down is we spend about sixty-six percent of our budget directly in the classroom on teaching staff, paraprofessionals. Um, supply. On teaching staff, paraprofessionals, um supplies and stuff for them. Uh maintenance and utilities makes up about eleven percent, curriculum and technology, that would include. Um professional development as well, makes about seven percent. District and school administration, so principals um as well as district level administrators like myself, Dr. Riedel Hoover. Are included in the five point five percent. Transportation makes up about four, as does activities, um and pupil support would be. Um mostly mental health supports, like our counselors, social workers, nurses, those types of positions. Within all those, um so all those combined. We spend about sixty percent of our budget on salaries and about nineteen point eight of benefits, combined, we're spending about eighty percent on our people. Um we got about nine percent spent on purchase services, that would include um our contracted transportation retro backs. And also um subteachers, all those things are through a um an agency to use on call, so we purchase those services. Spend about four percent on equipments and improvements to our buildings. And about six percent on supplies, utilities, textbooks, those types of things. Um our salaries break down within that eighty percent, about seventy-three percent is on licensed teachers. Uh we got about three hundred um certified staff within the district. And um about seven and a half is on professional support, six point five percent is on administration, about five percent each on. Custodial and clerical support. And then activities makes up two and a half, this one that's not labeled is our our um transportation employee drivers. Uh we both have in-house transportation and uh trox. Other side fund balance, this is what we were getting at back in two thousand nineteen when uh we asked voters for a levy. Um our fund balance was going down quite rapidly, um board policy says it's gotta be ten percent or we've gotta make adjustments. Board made some adjustments, got to eleven percent in nineteen twenty, levy was approved. Um and we're building the fund balance now, we're up to fifteen percent, sixteen, anticipated to be seventeen percent at the end of this year. Uh hopefully that grows up to about eighteen percent in next year's budget. In the first five years of your ten-year operating levy cycle, you're typically growing this fund balance. And then in the out-outlying years of that, you're typically spending them down. And then when you get to the end of that, you kind of got a very look at where are we at, are we still within our fund balance goals, do we need to make adjustments? Do we need to ask the community more of this, or does state funding keep up and we don't have to worry about it anymore? Uh so things basically we're required to do, provide education. Um assess student performance via standardized test, Marie spends a lot of time on that. Um tran-transport all students living within two miles or beyond two miles or more from school, we do transport everybody that wants a ride. Uh that lives in our district. And we are required to provide meals during the day, there's a whole lot of other mandates that fall under provide appropriate education. There are some resources on our district website under the business um department. This one is fantastic, Minnesota School Finance Guide is um is done, is put together for the House of Representatives by. Um a group that's been working um forever to support the House. Um they know school finance inside and out and and if you hear about uh you know different funding things being changed. At the legislative level, that's the first place I go for a reference guide to say, wait, how is that calculated and how's that gonna impact us? Um great guy, you wouldn't want to read it, it's basically reference material. And then there's also a school finance in Minnesota video that talks big picture about a lot of things. I spent about an hour and a half with Jen, so I've probably got about seventy minutes left.
It was a good meeting, I really appreciate it, thank you.
What questions can I answer for the board tonight?
I think you've answered this before, I just don't remember, when it comes to the unassigned fund balance, is there um uh. After we're on the spend down, is there a max percentage that you can have, isn't there supposed to be kind of a you're falling between these numbers without having too much?
Not, not really, um it's really up to the board to decide that.
Okay.
So we have a policy that says we shouldn't go below ten percent. Case our enrollment drops quickly or in case the state um you know holds back funds, just to make sure we have enough of a buffer to. Um you know be to to catch up because you know when eighty percent of your budget is in staff, it's hard to make. Large changes quickly if funding starts to go down quickly, so that's the reason for the ten percent um fund balance wanted. Um there's no s- um there's really no necessarily ceiling on that. But really it it depends on your district strategy, where they're at with other funding, like I said, we'll be going up. Hopefully hitting twenty percent here within the next couple of years, but knowing that there's a spend down on that coming.
Is it, is it the building bonds or one of the bonds where that money can't fit then, right? That has to be spent on, it's allotted whatever um and can't sit for too long.
Yeah, building bonds, the general um. The long story is you've got to spend the money there faster than you're making the money. And you have to be continuous, you have to fulfill the promises that you made when you um addressed the community.
Okay.
Next item on our agenda is uh a report on the outdoor lighting of fields of the high school. We is from Bradbury Stan Construction.
We uh grew in Bradbury Stan Construction, I've been working with the district since the build on the high school. So a lot of familiar faces, a lot of unfamiliar faces, so nice to meet everybody. Um Joe asked me to come and just kind of update everybody on what we're doing with the field lights. Um I know maybe you were anticipating approving this tonight. Um we changed the bid date, one because of the storm last week, we were afraid we would actually limit bidders getting to the district on Thursday. Um which is good for the district, we made a decision to push the date to tomorrow, um so we'll be opening bids tomorrow at two o'clock. The plan for construction of it, um because of lead times and to limit kind of damage to the facilities. Is in the summer, we're going to do as much underground roughing work, set panels, all the kind of inner workings of the system. And then wait until the ground freezes and bring in all the equipment to drill the foundations and set the big holes in the lights. Ultimately, that will be most beneficial, like the baseball field, for instance, the equipment's gonna have to drive on the field itself. To set the two outfield bowls uh because of a pond that's on the outfield fence. If we do that in the summer, spring, fall, the cost to repair that field, the district already spent a bunch of money on making it really nice. Um is just not, doesn't make any sense. That decision kind of came up through the bidding process, um as we found out what installers were bidding, I was having conversations with those guys. And uh really finding the inner workings of what equipment needed to be used and that kind of stuff. And uh based on that, the decision was made to kind of lay out the schedule where we go. Questions?
Do you have a question, but it stems from a conversation that Scott and I had, so and Scott's the contract person and I'm not. But are we only roughing in for those five or six lights? Or is there like a roughing for future fields as well with this bid? Am I saying that right?
Yeah, so we have that blank field and I've spoken to various people, you know, people that have soccer. Kids and pretty much all the people out there, there's a lot of. If we're doing this at this point, it would be nice if we could get it roughed in at the ball fields or future or field. And then I believe there's that extra baseball field that's not getting lights. So are we able to rough in or get that trenching done and some at least power poles run for future? Because otherwise, we're gonna have to go through the whole process and and tying it. So right now the plan, we're putting lights on the varsity baseball field, varsity softball field, soccer field, football field. For the four fields getting lights. Um we can certainly start thinking about planning for that, currently in the documents, there isn't anything. Um but there's also some fiber optic conduits that we're talking about potentially running to. And you're absolutely correct, like now's the time to definitely get in and throw extra conduits in the ground. And just give, even if they don't get all the way to the destination they're gonna need to be, if we get them close while we have sidewalks and stuff torn up, that makes a lot of sense.
And what we talked about is opening the original bids as is and then seeing if um what a what a potential, I forget what. Uh industry you call it, requested quotes or uh on top of that is, but. Uh wanting to get the original ones approved to make sure we have that within budget and then we can see, we can ask for add-ons to that. Once we know we're within budget for.
So yeah, once the bids are done and we figured out if we're within that budget. And then see what we can for any change order expense, yeah, and then we can set that for, you know, vote for the public.
Absolutely. Anything else?
Just want to make sure everybody knows where we're talking about, you maybe need to describe.
Yeah, all of the high school, all of the high school, the high school baseball field, the high school softball field, the high school soccer field and the football.
Yep, two fields that are right now mostly used for soccer.
Anyway, this is, this is money that's left over from the previous lot, it's not.
And I know um Joe and Jeff, we had talked about it, but it it's not. We wouldn't have to be moving these lights again, correct, like the lights are placed where on the football field um specifically. Where they would fit into a stadium, should there ever be a stadium built in the future, okay.
That is correct.
Next item is our school board committee reports, anybody have any committee reports?
I couldn't get into my committee, you heard shit superintendent, right, right? Or did you find the secret link?
Nope, couldn't get in.
It was actually for the C.
Yeah, they sent us the link and we couldn't get in, so.
Okay.
I have no updates, I'm sorry. Um.
You wanna do it to break down the comment?
Yeah, I can do that, uh so for the curriculum instruction and assessment, Jeff, you already kind of touched on this, but I'll just. Um no, it was really cool, um kind of moving from a. Uh the balanced literacy literacy approach in K through five, which I knew nothing about prior to this meeting um to. The science of reading approach and I mean to simplify it in. Most layman's terms, the way that I'm understanding it is kind of just getting back to the basic more phonetics. Um and then what was really cool, we were able to go through some of the material provided by the science of reading. Um programs and just how the brain processes information as children are learning to read. And then how it processes at each different development level. And then we get to watch um just the interaction with teachers who have been using some of the tools. That I think they've gotten through grants and samples from some of the companies that provide science of reading curriculum. But how they use those um strategies in the classroom and watching the kids kind of interact in that way. And then at each building level, so at Oak Ridge, at Pine Meadow and at River View, how the strategies are different. Um based on the developmental part of the brain and so that was cool to see, um and then. They had, they also brought in some of the little like tools that the kids will use, so a little mirror and uh. A picture of how the mouth looks when you say a word and we got to mimic that, so that was fun. Um and then there was just talk about the opportunities for as as there's a transition time going into a whole new comprehensive curriculum, I believe. Which is gonna take a little bit, but in that time, there is gonna be a lot of opportunity for parents to be involved in. I think building level committees as they start to roll out some things, so parents can kind of test out some of these strategies at home, give feedback. Um and then I I believe that the idea of having more of a informational. Just here's some of the things that we have going on with this at conferences. Um in grades for grades K through five, just having that be intertwined with conferences, so parents can kind of get a little. Uh you know, maybe twenty-minute blip on what is being implemented in their child's grade and what they can do, strategies at home to help. Yeah, so that was cool, I thought that was really neat because literacy, personally for me. You know, with my son, he struggles with it, so it was neat just to see the focus on that shifting and. Um getting back to kind of what appears to be the basics, but it was cool.
Um I've been filling in for Trisha at the Sartell Senior Connection meetings. I went to the February meeting, I'll go to the March meeting also. Great group, glad to get to know them, um they're excited, they're getting a new logo that kind of coordinates with the city's new logo that's been released recently. Um and then they they understand we don't yet have a community head director hired for next year, but when we do, they're one ask, it's that we. Look to offer a little bit more in the turn, in the way of adult education opportunities.
For sure, though.
There, they have lots of members that would be excited to do those things. Yeah, you touched on the C committee, C is uh schools for equity in education and that means financial equity such as equalization monies. Um so they're kind of a lobbyist group on behalf of our district and several others across the state. Um they've been giving updates lately that essentially the words they're using and everybody in St. Paul is using is that. The session at the Capitol is going at breakneck speed this year, there are just. An incredible number of bills being introduced, but that includes an incredible number of bills in the Education Finance Committee. Um none of them, I mean, some have been uh sent through the committee already, but the committee's meeting at least three things a week. Um so that's really ongoing work that we're not gonna see, like Joe said, you're not gonna see actual numbers or figure out what's gonna happen until later in the session, but. A lot of them would impact us because there are uh bills that would give property tax relief in a district like ours that's relatively property. Property tax poor, um there's a bill that would increase tax levy amounts, there's a bill that would increase. And this actually applies to us um long-term facilities maintenance money for um special education districts like we're a part of. Um and that leads into my next committee report, I've also been attending the Benton Stearns Education District's board meetings. And our uh district representative on that board, there are six school districts that we are part of uh Benton Stearns with. I'm gonna try to get them all right, Stock Rapids, Holding Ford, Kimball, um Recore and.
Holy.
I said holy, holy, there you go, thank you, holy fuck.
Somebody had it out there.
So um. The focus at Benton Stearns right now is, since we've been talking about facility stuff. Um there are three essentially big facilities in that education district, two of them are here in Sartell, one is the main office. Um on Second Street and then the other one is the one attached to our district office, the Pioneer's Building. Um Stock Rapids has the Voyager's Building and programming over there. And that's the third building that's being looked at as far as a comprehensive facility study because they are in desperate need of some upgrades. And we are in a unique situation because, and I'm learning all this through um. My education air and our executive director at Benton Stearns is just great and uh a good teacher. But long-term facilities maintenance money is available for metro districts that share special education services. Those are called independent districts, but in outstate like us, you either have an education district or a cooperative. And for whatever reason, there are no LTFM monies granted to those organizations, but we're in the metro, they get that funding from the LTFM. General fund at the state, we don't have access to that, so districts in our area have to spend their general fund monies to upgrade these facilities that are shared. Amongst the education districts, so we have an architect and a financial planning firm updating us on. This the strategy for how to get these um repairs done and the creativeness that's gonna be needed of how to fund them. Because they are each facilities that are owned one-sixth by each district. You can imagine the difficulty that might be where we have to go to all six districts electorates. To get money on a a building bond if you need to do something like that, so we're hoping to be creative, but. There is a bill, like I said, in this year's legislature that would grant LTFM monies to education districts like ours. So I think that'd be a very important um advancement, if something like that were to go through. So I will keep everybody up to speed, the architects have kind of given us a checklist of things that need to be done at each site. And a general timeline, now they're really gonna go back and study the strategy, what would make the most economic sense. They'll talk to the um financial planning firm that we've hired and come back to us in late March. I believe is our next facilities committee meeting that I'll be at, so I will update the board as we move on.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just questioned, so all six districts that participate have their own facility, but we all pay one-sixth?
So these are facilities, the three I'm talking about are facilities that serve each students from each district. But each district has special education programming in their own buildings as well.
Right.
So yeah, the the facilities we're looking at here, um you know, the Pioneer's Building that's attached to the district service center, that's not just Sartell students. That's a specialized program building that serves kids from all six districts. That serves kids from all six districts.
Okay.
So those are the, yeah, those are the buildings we're looking at that are co-owned.
Got it.
That need the upgrades.
All right. Just to clarify, we own our building attached to the district and then we there, that district is a tenant for us.
That's a good point, yeah. That one, in that situation, that's the least building, but the the main office and then the one in Stock Rapids.
Owned by Benton Stearns.
Are, yeah, are owned.
So if we own them, are the upgrades on us?
Well, one-sixth on us. Yeah, I mean, well, and they'll probably prorate the monies based on the number of students. That come from each district. That, these are details that have to be all worked out with the financial planning firm.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, but it it's, bottom line, it's a shared responsibility among all the districts. Yeah. Any other committee reports?
Um, the only thing that I was going to ask about the committees is um potentially uh figuring out dates for committees when they're supposed to meet. Who maybe some of the contact people are like within the district. Um so we can start moving forward on more of our committees meeting.
Yeah.
And just gain a better understanding, so.
Marie and I can send out some dates to various committees now.
Okay.
Find times everyone can.
That'd be awesome, thank you. And thank you, Marie. Sorry, I was looking at you. Are you a bit?
All right, we'll move on to. Our action items. The first one is approval of the personnel omnibus resolution. And that for the board members up here, there was one. Item removed from that, so we knew the latest copy was on the table when you got here. Something. Motion by Jason.
I'm second.
Second by Jen. Hearing no discussion?
Uh, sorry, I do have a discussion. Um, and I don't know if it's something that would require a closed meeting. I did call Superintendent Rital Hoover um just to make him aware, but line five. Of the new employees, I was wondering if we could pull that out for individual um. Uh conversation or discussion and um. Just because there's some information that I. Am aware of that I don't want us to end up being back here in a month potentially. That's just the only way. So I don't, I don't know if we have to. I don't want to break any rules because I know the personnel, so I don't know if it's a closed meeting, but individual consideration and discussion on line five. Or.
That's a good question.
What I understood in my very limited MSBA clerk training um was that yes, you can pull an item out, but that it wouldn't be. Because it's personal discussion that it wouldn't be closed.
Yeah.
Very limited. Now we go.
Um. I'm going to call a five-minute recess just so I can figure this out. So we'll reconvene at, that's all right, um. What, we'll reconvene at eight after around nine o'clock? All right, continuing discussion of the personnel omnibus resolution. Any further discussion? All right, we'll call for our votes. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Okay, so I, correct me if I'm wrong, I had aye votes from Scott, Tricia, Emily, Matt, and Jason, and a nay vote from Jen, correct?
We are voting to vote.
Yeah, this is a voting to approve. The motion was to approve the personnel omnibus resolution I presented in front of you. So, we need to revote or? Is that what you understood?
That's what I understood. Yep.
Okay. Everybody understood that? Okay, so the vote was uh five to one. Resolution passes. Next action item. Um, number two, approved policy, so. Back to where I was. Okay, this is approval of policies two oh three point five, four ten, four fourteen, four fifteen, five twenty-four, five twenty-five, five forty-one, six oh one, six oh two, six oh three, six oh four, and six oh five. Hear a motion?
So moved.
Second by Jen, second by Jason. Um, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Motion passes unanimously. The next item is approval of the two thousand twenty-four Sartell High School Music Extended Field Trip Request. Since the. Uh field trip to New Orleans. Hear a motion?
So moved. I'll second.
Motion by Jason, second by Tricia. Any discussion?
I do.
Yep.
Um, I just noticed a date discrepancy between the front. Page and then the the second, and I think the second page is actually the permission slip. So um I don't know if this has already gone out to families. If not, um we might want to suggest that those dates be updated. So it's safe.
Yeah.
Dates are. Oh, thank you, thank you. And then I did have just a general question, um. And. Principal Boothler, if you have the answer, feel free to time in, um but. Is the eight adults, is it eight adults that are going, like I'm counting four staff members? And there'll be four parent volunteers, is that?
That's what I understand, so.
Is that an appropriate ratio for seventy-five to eighty-five? I don't, I don't, I'm asking, I don't know.
I would say that, my experience if that's been about right.
Okay.
Some other questions that. Probably before, I won't think, I don't know that I've ever seen a. Direct, like it has to be this.
Okay.
But for high schools, I think that's very.
Okay.
I share one of the most tricky.
Okay.
Here was my only question on that one. Um, remember how we talked about in the last policy meeting, school board or uh field trip, school field trip? And saying come back to school, not saying come to school, what's our liability, yada, yada. Did we get clarification on that and does, this appears to be a school sanction? Uh, field trip, which would be a little different than what we were discussing.
We talked about not um. Me wanting to go through process, it didn't happen in the summertime in those type of things. This one is during the school year, that was kind of the difference.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so this is a school.
Different category.
Yep, right, yes, right. Policy discussion we were having relates to. These tour companies that are not school affiliated. They might end up having staff be their chaperones or sponsors or whatever, but it's. Separate from the district. This is district.
Yep. Well, I think it sounds fun. As we. Right?
Any other questions or discussion? All right, uh call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Well, are we voting to like with the amendment of the dates?
Oh, uh.
I think that's just the permission slip.
Okay.
Yeah, I I don't think that's part of the request necessarily. But yeah, I see right now the permission slip talks about dates in twenty twenty-two.
It's a good catch when people pick up their kids and they're.
So, yeah, I don't think we need any sort of amendment, so we'll just call for a vote on the original motion to approve the trip. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? All right, motion passes unanimously. Uh last action item, approved memorandum of understanding with school service employees local two eighty-four. And the memorandum of understanding is in our materials here. Uh this relates to. Um, and this was recommended by the district office, from what I understand, um just relates to if. Uh renovation can be carried over from the paraprofessional bargaining unit um to the clerical bar bargaining union. For any staff that makes that jump, so any questions, comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Uh passes unanimously. Discussion items, uh this is our first. Reading of policies that we went over in our last work session. Those are policies two oh three point two, two fifteen, six oh seven, six oh eight, six oh nine, six thirteen, six fourteen, six fifteen, six sixteen, six eighteen, six nineteen, six thirty. And since we had a work session and discussed them all, I assume we don't have discussion here. Okay? Then.
Thank you, Marie.
Yep, thank you. Okay, um next discussion item is separate review of policies five thirty-three, six eleven, six twelve, and six twenty-five. Again, discussed recently at a work session. Any further discussion here?
No.
Okay. Next item up for discussion is uh what Joe alluded to, talked about. Potential spring twenty twenty-three work session for the budget conversation. Um that's the budget that will be. Voted on in June at our board meeting, approved there. Um Joe had reached out to me saying. Early June would work best for this because we won't have all the information we need to have this discussion for then. So then we talked, we'll session in early June.
That's enough time?
We, I think so. Originally, it was a week. That we'd have to review, so.
Yeah.
Much longer. Um, after the conversation with uh Joe and Superintendent Rital Hoover, we kind of, the three of us said that it would probably be. Best to have it, where did it go?
You just.
Um, to have it sooner than that in case there was any kind of revisions that needed to be made. Um, as well as in the treasurer training that I had taken for MSBA, they had recommended since there's half of a new board, that it would probably be beneficial that. We have a work session, so.
What about the revision, the revised budget? Is that, are we doing a work session for that as well, or is that already all done?
I don't think so.
Okay, so.
No, so. So our June board meeting is not till the twenty-sixth, Monday the twenty-sixth, so if we do a week of the fifth, that's. Three weeks before, we go twelve, it's two weeks before, or what?
Fifth.
We go fifth?
If if we can make that work.
Everybody in town. I mean, that's the first week after school ends, a lot of people rush out of town and on vacation, everybody around.
I'm open other than Monday and Tuesday.
Okay. Could we do a Wednesday evening, the seventh, June seventh?
I'm just thinking we should do everything we can to allow as much time as possible because I feel like we're looking at a. Giant budget and.
Okay.
Very small.
So should we say June eleventh, uh six P M?
Yes.
The work session?
Six P M, you said?
Yep.
Yeah.
District conference, man. Oh, yeah, thank you. All right, move on to the next discussion item, so um. Process and protocols for potential school board listening sessions, the uh. Catalyst for this discussion is.
Me.
I was just going to give a general background, but uh. So. Back in, I think it was October twenty twenty-one was the first time we used our uh sign up, online sign up process for public forum. And since that time until this month, we had never had. Uh a limit of ten being reached. So when we reached the limit of ten this time around, uh the sign up forum got pulled off the website. And for several reasons, and a couple of us have had discussions already, that was probably not the best way to do it. Uh there are better reasons to keep it open, even if we go beyond ten on the sign up forum, keep that sign up open until noon at noon on Friday. Um, so I, I guess I'd stop there. Does anybody have issue with that part of it, that we keep our sign up forum open even after ten are signed up? Okay, I think what we need to really decide then is. If more than ten sign up, how do we select which ten speak? Is it? Options I see being potential are first come, first served, whoever gets on the sign up board first, the first ten. Or we could do, you know, say there's fifteen, you do some sort of a random lottery or a number generator to just select that random ten of those fifteen that have signed up. I don't personally have any interest in anybody on the board or superintendent being. Charged with doing a subjective review of what topics people have signed up for. And selecting based on that, I don't think that's a road that we want to go down. So does anybody else have ideas on how we could select our ten?
Um, well, in that, I think almost two-hour conversation that you, myself, uh Superintendent Rital Hoover and Emily had. One of them and one that I had asked for was that we um added maybe a potential second open forum. At the end of the meeting. I know at first I said listening session, but after that conversation, we had talked about.
Just to clarify, are we talking about just tonight or are we talking in the general?
In general, if there's that big of a demand. Now, that isn't a norm and we've discussed and have seen that, um we have access to that. Sign up sheet, so we can see if there is or not a need. Um. Personally, I don't want to tell anybody in this community that they can't address us if they want to address us. Good, bad, or ugly, like I I think we all need to to hear that. I know that we discussed that there's. The ability to send emails or um have phone conversations, and I'm sure a number of people have done both. Um I just don't want to ever say to somebody that, no, you cannot come to a meeting and speak to us as a board. So, I would rather have a second spot in the agenda reserved for. That potential versus, and not needed, we might not ever need it, but.
And if it's. If the sign up is left open, we are going to know well in advance. If the demand is there to actually necessitate that, I think. If the sign up is open all week, we're we're going to have a pretty good gauge on. If we need to make adjustments to move to something like that instead, um well before the meeting. But at, back to your question, Matt, yes, I. No, I don't think any one person should have a unilateral decision-making ability over the topics that are going to be discussed. I think a lottery idea is. Drawing a name on the hat, I think that's great. How would that work? Like, are you talking in a technological sense? It would just kind of at random choose it for us, or?
Right, well, you could do, yeah, you could do that, have. Just a district office employee do a random number generator, like I said, so.
Yeah.
Start with the numbers one through, how many ever people have signed up.
Yeah.
Um and then that gets, that list would get emailed out to us after the close of registration on Friday afternoon.
Yeah.
Um, you could do it where, I I mean, so that scenario would allow them, the ten, to know who they are and prepare over the weekend. But you could, if you wanted it to be more of a public display and, you know, prove it's random, you could just have all the names that started the meeting for. Uh for public forum and put them all in the bucket and draw ten out.
Personally, I like that better, but it, I think that this all goes back to, if we get to the point where there would be. You know, fifteen people, whatever the number is going to be, that would trigger an additional or, you know, an amendment to how we do this. Um. Yeah, I, so that's ten people who aren't going to be part of the normal open forum time, I think that they would need to know beforehand instead of doing it. And draw ahead when they arrive here. It's not really fair to give people that much prep time, I guess, so.
Well, especially in, not that we've seen this. If there were somehow a month where, we're not talking this fifteen, we're talking forty people sign up. If you're only selecting ten, you don't want forty people spending their time preparing for a speech when they've got one or more chance of. Of actually standing up during the regular public forum. Um. Yeah, personally, I hear you, Jen, on the, I don't want to turn anybody away, but. There's always going to have to be a limit because, you know, if forty, fifty, sixty people sign up, it's all have to time.
Well, I think some of that is a little bit far-fetched, but.
Well, sure, but.
I understand what you're saying, there has to be a threshold, but at the same time.
And there already is in our policy. I mean, essentially, if we're saying. We're going to have our regular public forum with ten people at the start, and then every time there's more than ten that sign up, it's going to be added at the end of the meeting. We don't have a limit, I mean.
Correct. My thing is though is. Particularly, one of the points of this conversation was the book issue. We didn't want to keep dragging this out either. I think all of us are tired. I think all of us are tired of of that. Um, and by telling people that they can't speak, try next month. I mean, that's just sending it. You're just prolonging potential. Conversations that don't allow us to move forward either.
I think that the conversation that we had too is how rare is it that we have over. Three, let alone ten. So we're kind of planning for the rare occasion, but this was a prime example of why not having a plan for the rare occasion. Got to be a little uh more chaotic than it needed to be, so. Can we pick a number in which we trigger something different? So i- if we get to fifteen, I I'm just throwing out examples. So i- if we get to fifteen, I, I'm just throwing out example numbers, if we get to fifteen, we still just pick ten and we stick to our ten at three minutes. If we get to twenty, we move to a listening session, or we move to an additional open forum at the end, can we find that number that we all agree upon that? You know, if we, if we aren't above this, we'll stick to our ten, if we go above that number, we will make adjustments to how we do it.
So.
I just think it's very important that the community be able to address the board.
Well, if you have twenty, thirty, forty people. Wanting to speak to us, it's clearly there's nothing going on, so that would be probably more where we would trigger a listening session, if we're into that.
What, yeah, and I'm just gonna ask Jason, since you've got the most experience on the board, what, what are typically the? Purpose of listening sessions, are they limited to a specific topic? Or if there's a specific action item that the board has to pay?
Yeah, it's, it's usually been around in action, uh, I mean, the last one, the last big one was the fail referendum, and that's when we went around. From the different buildings and then different events, like out of Blackberry, I think they had one here. Um, that's usually one, what we've had in these things sessions, but I like that idea of having some type of a trigger. Um, I, I'd also like to see, I mean, this is one month. In what, two and a half years, right, let's, if it happens two or three months in a row. You know, then obviously there's a trend there that, you know, we may need to open more spots. I also think if we're in that, you know, ten to fifteen, let's not do it afterwards, why don't we just do it as part of it? And not make people sit here through the whole meeting then to hear two or three more people speak at the end.
I wouldn't object to that, I don't want us to be turning people away.
Or if it gets to be too much for an open forum, again, if you have twenty, thirty people. It's probably around a topic, would be my guess, if you have twenty to thirty people wanting to speak, there's probably something specific going on, which. A listening session would then, you know, center around whatever that topic is that people are wanting to address us about, so.
So I think one example you used is if. Say twenty or more people sign up, then we extend, and like Jason suggested, extend the beginnings, public forum from ten to fifteen, something along those lines, but.
But still stay at ten, again, until we start seeing a trend of every month there's fifteen people. And if there's the next month, there's twelve or thirteen, we do the random drawing, whether that's here or beforehand, to get to the ten.
Yep.
And again, if we see it the following month, obviously, we might need to adjust that ten to fifteen, right?
Just, just to share again, I think our average in the last year has been two to three people.
Right.
Three to three people, so it's pretty rare, but the hope is that people will contact us and we can have those conversations, but.
It i- it is rare, it was just a prime example, I mean, I was in the sunshine, sunshine state of Florida in ninety degrees, having conversation with people about why they couldn't sign up to speak. So, just the chaos of really not having the process in place, it probably will not come into play very often. But got to see how it works out when it's not there this past week, so.
And I should say, I'm sorry for any confusion, because when signups closed. I think the original message from before the signup period went on, so it's, I think it wasn't clear that people couldn't get in because the signups. Ten had been reached, we did update that message, but I don't think we did that until Thursday, so apologize for any confusion that that caused.
I like, I also wanted to say, like, I like the idea of it staying open, because we've had a lot of. Instances where we've made a contact with, like, we offer that, that option of, like, if you'd like us to contact you. Um, either superintendent or board chair, correct? And you, you, we've in the past, reached out, and then that person has said, you know, I don't need to come and speak, my answer is, but, or my question is answered. So even if we get to that ten, like, let's say, two or three of those people are like, no, I don't need to come and speak, I feel good about where I'm at, you answered my questions. Like, if we don't have that list that continues, like, we can't offer that to that next person.
And that was the difference.
Plus, if you have thirteen or fourteen, like, you can still reach out to those people that didn't make the cut of ten for our meeting, but I do also like your idea. If we get to twenty. Yeah, and that was something that we had brought up too, Trish, with that. If somebody does have a conversation and no longer wants to speak, then you do have that next person who can come up and have that opportunity. My other question, it would be, um, and it's more specific to. The actual signup, who has access to that? Do we have too many cooks in the kitchen? Because it seemed like this month in the conversation, again, that the four of us had. We had some issues with it opening up too early, people who signed up had to be removed, then we had it sign, you know, it opened. Then we were full, then we were closing things, like. Is there something where we just limit the number of people who have access to that to eliminate?
Only, only one person should be touched.
I, I actually would agree with that, I do think that it should just be one person, um, I don't know if that means that we have to create a new.
Well, I think that has to be more, that, that has to be at least two.
Yes, access, access and, and editability or two thousand, I think, yeah.
Because we can have somebody access it to open it and close it, right, and then.
Yeah, Marie and I talked about it.
Okay, we have. So. If we, do we just want to say, we'll keep it at ten for now? If we get twelve next month, are we okay just saying in that instance, unless something dramatically happens? Can we just allow the twelve to speak in the normal open forum time, because it's not that extreme of an extension? If it starts to go beyond that, that's when we'll start looking at, um, doing random drawings to get to our ten. That goes to like fifteen, we'll do our random drawing, get it down, um, otherwise, over that, we'll, uh, we'll talk about potential with.
Or just having that second open forum, so there's structure to it, where it would be.
However.
Yeah.
However, we want to word it, I feel like it's semantics at that point and what we're calling it.
I know, but, like, that conversation that we had, I think it was just throwing people, because then there was.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't like the idea of opening a second forum for exactly the reason Jason said, I don't want to ask any of the people that are here to stay through. All of us, like, if we're gonna allow people to come and speak, I think it needs to stay at the beginning, and we don't.
That's fine.
But I also think we need to stick to our limit of ten, and we only move out of that if we can send you the seed.
Right, trying to move in differently.
I agree. Yeah, but. So let's go.
Yeah, I also. Random.
Yeah.
I.
Oh, yeah.
What's the purpose of someone, like, I guess, first of all, when, when is it open, I would love for that to be like a consistent.
Could be eight A M.
If we're at eight A M on Monday.
Yeah.
Okay.
Eight A M on Monday closes noon on Fridays.
Okay. So if we're opening at eight A M and we have somebody in our community that gets up at eight o'clock and signs up. Shouldn't they give, be given the priority of being able to know that they're, they're signed up?
I think that the whole question mark, and where it originally stemmed from is when this process changed in October twenty twenty one. And the idea had come up, it was, um, Jeff had said, you know, if we get more than ten. We'll allow people to continue to sign up, and, you know, at, at that time, it was just kind of, I think, shooting from the hip, but somebody. Jeff or somebody will make a determination on like a variety of topics, so that the board isn't hearing a repetitive topic over and over and over again, granted. When you get that many people signing up, it probably is a repetitive topic, but, uh, if there is actually variety in the topics. But that's why it's not a probably good idea to have any one person actually deciding that, it would be more of an at random.
You also can't tell exactly what the board can talk about.
Right, because they don't.
I mean, there is one safeguard in our policy, our policy says that if a quote-unquote group or organization wants to talk to us, so I mean. Sports team comes with a facilities request, they don't need to sign ten people up, under our policy, we can designate one or two people. As part of that official group to talk to us, but that's the only limit I know of. In our policy, where, where that is, I, I, there's nothing in the policy that talks about getting a variety of topics or anything like that, which is why I, I have no interest in going down that road. Um, so.
Yeah, it's, I think it, it all stems from, okay, if you want to talk about the soccer field, but everybody else wants to talk about a book. And you work at seven thirty, and it's just not in the cards for you to beat them to the punch, you know, at the eight A M signup, we'll not look at you to talk about your soccer field. That's more of the, I think that's kind of the thing we're trying to avoid.
Yeah.
Is making sure that at least if there is this one varying topic out of all of them, that you can really decipher easily, how do we at least give that person an opportunity?
I also don't want to ever see one or two, three people be told. No, you can't speak, wait until next month, that was, I mean, I, I think that, in my opinion, that's kind of a slap in the face to our community, they have. The right to, they elected us, they have the right to have their voices heard, I understand that they can call and email.
Yeah, not so much that, but I mean, this is existing practice, it's been around for years.
I know, but sometimes things have to change.
It's not, um, but my point is, it's not a slap in the face, because it's been our. Procedure for, for, how long, they're limited to a certain number of speakers. Um. Yeah. I think I've heard the suggestion that at least for the next two, three months, we keep it at ten, see if there's a trend, is everybody okay doing that? Part of it, okay. Because we can always revisit this after we see whether this becomes a trend or not, having more than ten sign up, um. Then. Now, for these next two, three months, what are we gonna do to select, are we gonna do the random, or are we gonna do first come, first served? And take a straw poll on that?
I mean, I guess. Since it's not norm to have more than ten, I think. As long as there's ten, they get to speak.
But you're saying, you're saying.
Yes, I'm talking if there's eleven or more, how do we get it down to ten for our limit in the next few months?
Well, does that go back to the point of if there's one or two extra, can they just be added on like we did tonight, I don't know?
We gotta settle in.
I know.
Because you're just gonna keep saying, well, then. Let's set a, set a limit. And. You know, again, we'll, we'll go based off of what, next month is coming, um. I was, I was saying, um. Yeah, as far as the random thing, I, I, I'm not opposed to taking, I, I, it's due what, Friday, you said? So, so I, I would assume if people sign up early that day, you know, they're probably gonna have to wait then, if at least. In the first two days of signup, we got twenty people. I'm sure in order to prep and, and make arrangements. Close of Friday, we would probably need to get that answer for them as soon as they can, so they can prep for two days.
Yeah, the idea would be. As soon as it closes on Friday at noon, let's see how many are on the list, you use that many numbers, put it in a random number generator, and whatever ten numbers come out. That's the people on the list that get their spot, and we notify them right away.
Yeah, I'd say let's just do that, because the odds that the topics are varying on, let's do that.
Sure.
I think that's.
And revisit it and sort of, yeah, on all fronts, the random, the total number. You good with that, Jen?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, let's find moving forward, Marie, you good?
Oh, wait, if we get twenty.
Yeah, I think we'd agree on, I thought we all agreed. So we would, we would then tackle.
Okay, even in the next two, three months?
Yes.
Okay.
If we get twenty at any point, let's, yeah, we, we need to have something figured out. So I say at twenty, is twenty our mark?
Are we talking from a listening session? Same day as board meeting or a different time?
Uh, beforehand, I, I don't have any ideas here.
Before, so like a six o'clock?
Well, if we have twenty people that want to address the board in half hour, are we gonna have structure to that listening session?
I, I just don't know, I mean, if we bump forward from the board meeting time, we might run into a schedule problem.
Well, that was one of the conversations that we had at the work session was. Why we didn't want to switch the, the open forum part, because then if we had only two people sign up, then we have to wait for.
It's either after or a different day, and I would say.
Yeah, I mean, our meetings are bulky enough, as it is, I'm fine with a different date, I just think it needs to be in a.
Reasonable amount of time.
Which that.
Sure, like within a week or two?
Within a week, if we can, and that's where it gets dicey, we have all of us trying to coordinate that then, so that's the only benefit to having it on the same night.
And hear me out, because, yeah. Whether it's on the same night or not, we're gonna possibly run into scheduling issues with six of us, Jason, there's been listening sessions with less than. The whole board, right, I mean, that's not an uncommon.
Yeah.
So. We could just do a, hey, as many of us show up as possible.
Yeah, now, can we define this listening session versus this open forum, because I know that was part of our conversation. So as far as the listening session goes, that means, correct me if I'm wrong, there can be open dialogue between board and community, correct? Versus an open forum, which is where they address us without any kind of conversation back. So. Just so we know exactly what we're.
Are we gonna do it the same in every scenario, and, and I'm thinking in my mind, like, you know, Jason said one possibility is, there's something huge going on, like a referendum.
Correct.
But the board has to make a vote, take an action on a big item. That would, in my mind, probably be better for a listening session, where if it's. Just because open forum had so many speakers, but it's not on the same topic, in my mind, that's more of like an open forum, that's.
Well, that's what I mean, so we're like.
Yeah.
We're convolving both of them, so we have to separate them a little bit, if it's an open forum, or maybe I'm just convolving it, I don't know.
I, in my opinion, it's open forum, because that's what they signed up for, was.
Right.
Yeah.
The listening session, like, when we did the referendum, that was, again, to hear from the community why they didn't vote for it.
Right.
And then to have a dialogue back, you know, between, what could we have done different?
Okay, so, we should do it as an open forum format.
Yeah.
The three minutes with first speaker, if it's, if the reason for it is that we've got so many people signed up.
For the open forum, correct.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good.
Although if it is all on the same topic, is that something where we can look at it and say?
I think that's something where we.
If it's an action item.
Kirk it back together, and before the action item, just. Decide to schedule a listening session, and that would be a different date, I'm sure, for that reason, they're separate events. Okay.
I think we're good.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, thank you, um. Next thing, next question then is, do we do that tonight, which. The logistics of it. Are that, I mean, we'd have to have people sign up after our meeting and. I don't know.
Oh, this is the question.
Yeah, that's, well, this opening discussion on, because we did put the placeholder on the agenda.
I'm all for it, if, if there are people here that did not, which is we could address board, I'm here, so, remind us why.
I wrote with Emily, so she's married.
And she's stuck with me regardless, so.
I mean, I'm more than happy to, to listen to anybody, like I said, good, bad, or ugly, I mean.
Yeah.
It's our community, we all agree that we want to build bridges, not burn them, so. Um.
Yeah, I would, I would be fine.
But I also hadn't told you, I just requested it as a placeholder in the event that we had more people who did want to address us, so. If that's not the case, then that's not the case. I feel like I kind of want to ask everybody, and I.
I know, I'm like.
Who would sign up for a, if we limited this, I think we put a placeholder for a half an hour ago, we kind of discussed.
Yeah.
Ten more.
Of the ten more people, there are show of hands, if we would even sign up to speak for three minutes at the end of our meeting tonight?
We do not have the logistics of this knocked out yet, so.
Nobody, so I don't think.
A placeholder is, uh, not invited, so.
Alright, um. Last two discussion items, the next board meeting, we're back at the district service center, Monday, March twentieth.
Uh, yes, it is.
Get it, okay.
First day of spring, maybe we'll actually.
Okay, Monday, March twentieth, six thirty P M at the district center, that's our next regular meeting, our next. Scheduled work session is Wednesday, May third, at five thirty P M at the district service center, and. As we just talked about tonight, we also have one on June sixth, at six P M at the district session, seven, sorry, the Wednesday.
Yeah.
Wednesday.
Six, seven, six.
There you go. Thank you, uh, motion. Oh, we did our committee reports.
Yeah. Second.
Alright, motion by Jason, second by Jen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.